Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this fifth day of November 2020. Please rise and join us for the Pledgeable Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of all with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilman Martell?
Here.
Councilman Laugstad?
Here.
Councilman Bubay?
Here.
Councilman Skibode?
Here.
Okay. Thank you, Sunday. We'll get started. Apologies for the slightly late delay. Having a little technical issues with some of the camera movement. So if we have presentations, Janice, I don't know if there's presentations. We can't film anything over here. If you're putting anything on the wall, we won't be able to see it, so.
They did have some digital, but I don't know if I can.
The digital on the screens should be okay.
After I present, I'll maybe go over there and try to.
And there may be an interface for that, too. So we can check with LTV.
Do you want to call down IT to assist? Want me to get that?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay.
All right.
While you do that.
And you have a thumb drive, John.
Video. And are you going to?
Yeah, well, I don't know. I'll sit there when you go and I'll advance it if it works out.
If they're going to want me to email it to a draft or something.
All right. So you've got to put something on the screen? Is that right?
As soon as I'll just kind of talk.
You can get started.
And then I'll work that out. Yeah, just in the interest of time.
All right, so.
You have your paper.
And there's paper copies, too, of.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, well, I'll try to get it on the screen, too.
Either way, we'll be fine. Janice Shearer is our Land Planning and Development Administrator, and she's going to introduce this.
Thank you, Jay. Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, thanks for having us this morning. This is a continuation of a conversation about a zone change application located at 107 South Country Road in Quayog behind the Strebbles Laundry Facility. And you've seen this, there was an initial proposal for, I think, upwards of 180 units, and there was some concern. So the applicant has gone back and taken a look at what else they can do here in terms of provide. It's important that we provide affordable housing on both sides of the canal. We all know this. We are doing an affordable housing study with VHB. But I think that they've done a nice job of working with me to try and meld this into a more palatable proposal for your consideration. So today, they want to show you what they've kind of arrived at, where they are thinking.
Before we do that, can you sort of take us through the process again? There's a two-step process, correct?
Right. So the first, we're still in that elect to consider realm where you haven't even considered, said, we'll entertain this formally. So this is what's considered like a pre-application stage.
Okay.
What, as you know, zone changes are discretionary. You don't have to change the zone. Zoning is zoning. You can on your own motion, or you can upon petition. This is, they're asking to petition you to change this zone to a multifamily zone. Initially, they were asking for an affordable housing overlay on top of that to double the density. Now, it's my understanding they are not, so.
So like we did with concern for independent living?
Right.
Where we sort of conditioned a, you know, the town board's consideration?
That's right. You have done that in recent.
Right. So we're sort of in that step is, under what circumstance would we consider entertaining a change in zone?
Exactly. Yeah, even if you were to say, okay, we consider, we are electing to consider, and you put forward a resolution and passed it, that doesn't mean they, you know, you don't have to go through an entire review of it still. It just means you're going to go through those motions.
We're sort of determining, under what circumstance, if any, we would consider.
Exactly.
Having a full hearing on a zone change.
And this process was kind of put in place years ago because there was a situation where people were saying, well, we've put all this time and effort and money, and we're so far down the road. And the town board said, you know, we don't want you to be this far down the road. You know, we don't want to consider this. So this is why this step was put into place. So you have that option up front to say no, or to say, you know, this is interesting. I want to know more about it. Let's go through the process and see what happens. So that's what we're at right now, just deciding whether or not.
Thank you.
You want to take a look at it. So with that, I will turn it over. John Bennett is the attorney for the applicant.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to, if there's no objections, just only while I'm at the podium, I'll.
That's fine. Six feet away from her, anybody, you're good.
Okay. Thanks very much. I'm just going to have, well, Jonathan Gertman is here, who's going to, as he did last time, do the primary part of the presentation. I'm just going to, just so that I don't leave anybody out or mispronounce anybody's name, probably not, but can you, I just, the team members and the owner, current owner, just identify themselves? That means identify yourselves, stand up and sound off, so to speak.
Sal Coco, Baby Harvey, Coco Architect.
So what are going to ask you to do, John, for, since we're not going to really get this, and we're certainly not going to get it in the recording, as each person says their name and position, if you could just repeat it into the microphone?
Okay, sure.
So we'll start again?
Sal Coco, Baby Harvey, Coco Architect.
So I don't have you on the list, but what is it again? Say it again.
Sal Coco, Baby.
Thanks.
Baby Harvey, Coco Architect.
Okay. Rob?
Rob Muchnick, Partner, Measure Group Properties.
Rob Muchnick, Muchnick Partner.
Mike Russo, Nelson Pope, Lorgies.
Mike, hopefully, Mike Russo from Nelson Pope. Somebody might remember, Mike worked at the town many years ago.
Bob Scuttles, Scuttles Laundry.
I think we got Bob's name, of course. He's one of the owners.
Former mayor.
Miles Monahan, the NRP Group.
Miles Monahan, NRP Group.
Peter John Scuttles, Scuttles Laundry.
Another Mr. Strebbles, from the owner.
Mark Schraebert with the NRP Group.
Mark Schraebert with the NRP Group.
John Schneider with McBride Government Consultant.
John Schneider, McBride Government Consultant. I think that was cumbersome, but we did it, right?
All right.
Okay. But I didn't want to leave anybody out, or I had everybody's name except for the architect.
Oh, your time's up.
My apologies. Yeah. Okay, that's fine. Well, and I think, I just, just sort of, we're really here at the point, you know, Janice is right. It became a little bit cumbersome, the prior owner-guided zone change, or owner-initiated zone change. People would come in and they'd spend all this time, and then the town board would say, that's nice, but we're really not interested. So they would go through this process. So I think actually this process has worked really well because we came in and we had originally 180 homes, in effect. And through the meeting with the town, the civic groups and whatnot, we're at a point now where there are 104 homes on 17.4 acres. And quite candidly, I think we're sort of at the, you can use your phrase, probably the better east end one is to fish or cut bait at this point, whether or not you folks think this is a viable enough idea to move forward. Ultimately, it's still within your discretion. We know that. But we come here because we want to know that generally there's a level of comfort on where we're going. Now, it ain't over till it's over. We're all well aware of that. There was one, somebody many years ago brought a lawsuit against the town because they said just that, you know, we went all the way into this zone change application and spent all this money and did all this work, and then at the last minute, the town said no, and they brought a lawsuit. And I remember the local bar all said, that ain't going anywhere because it's within the board's discretion. So I think this has been a very helpful process so that you can't, you can't do that. But ultimately, it's in your discretion. But I think, and, you know, I'm not trying to be too assertive, but I think, I think we are at the time now where, after our presentation, and maybe with a little bit of reflection, we'd like to know whether or not the board generally feels comfortable with us moving forward. I think we are fulfilling a need. I think the town has been, done a better job than the villages of providing affordable housing. And I think, and I think that's, that's why we've come here. And we think it's a fertile place for it, this particular site. We don't think it's going to work any significant change in the character of the neighborhood. We think it'll be a very positive community benefit. So with that, I'll ask Jonathan to come up and present because he knows the project a lot in a more specific and intimate way than I do.
The, just, the density you're proposing is six units an acre?
Yes, six.
Is there a particular zone, zoning category you're looking to be in?
Well, it's MFPRD.
MFPRD?
Yeah. We probably need a little help. Maybe I was thinking going to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There are some unit limitations on that. I think it's 75 is overall, but it, and I don't want to ask the town board.
Are there dimensions?
I don't, I don't want to ask the town board to change the legislation because that's always a big magilla, but we could, there would be another method of doing it if the, if the board felt comfortable with it. We could go to the zoning board and ask for some sort of relief.
Is that, Janice, is the only category that would allow for this type of development under the current zoning code?
There's MF44, but that's, I believe, four units, one per 11,000.
It's a little bit of a catch-22. As Janice said, there's one per four units, but the MFPRD is one per six units, but it has a 75 cap. It just honestly, the numbers don't work, so we probably, I mean, unless the board wanted to modify it, the law, I think it's probably just an easier and less cumbersome thing to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I just don't, anytime I ask a board to modify a law, then it, then you have to study its effect over the town. I don't know, Janice, if we can talk about.
Well, you could get to the number that you're looking, that you're comfortable with with that. This is 100% affordable, right?
Yeah.
So you still have that 330-8.
Oh, my mistake, then. That's great.
You could overlay it on that to get to whatever number.
Get to the lower number.
Are there locational standards as well with MF44?
Right.
Yeah.
There are locational standards as well with MF44?
Yes, there are. That would require, there are also things in there that allow you to waive them if you want to, but there are locational standards.
Location of the downtown.
It's within a certain distance.
Is this within a certain, the right distance?
No, this does not meet it.
No. No. The problem with that is it's a nice goal, but the practicality and the suitability of spots, I think it's tough. I mean, it's a nice thought, but ideally, that's where you'd have them, but just the land isn't available.
Right. You have the other thing I'm looking for in the presentation, and you know, reducing from 180 to 104 is significant.
40%.
Yes, there's no doubt. We haven't done one that big?
You've done it with a similar density, but on a smaller parcel.
Right, exactly.
And that's why when we came in here, the original.
We've done it with higher density. I mean, Sandy Hollow had a probably double that density.
Yeah, but on a smaller parcel. And total less number of units.
So you can see where it is on the tax map?
You know, Janice, what's the, or, John, what is the address of this property?
I'm sorry, it's actually 670 Montauk Highway. 107 is this little out.
670 Montauk Highway is the address?
Yeah, it's the whole parcel. We'd have to actually subdivide out the commercial parcel of it, but by.
So here's Montauk Highway, and this is South Country Road, and this is, you know.
Yeah, Little Long Madison, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't see that as a, as much of a challenge.
So after this, after you say you have to subdivide the commercial portion off it, what's the left acre?
17, 17.
17 is after the subdivision.
Point four is after the, we subdivided out. I don't see that as a big issue. As a matter of fact, five acre, five acre or more subdivision, Mike, you'll help me on this. I think it almost might be, there's a review process, but it might also, I might almost be technically exempt, so I don't see that as a big hurdle in terms of slowing things down. We just do that on a parallel basis. So I'm not worried about that. But it makes sense, obviously, to put the business uses on a separate parcel.
Okay.
And we could also provide on that parcel plenty of transitional, transitional in the yards.
If the board were not inclined to go as high as the 104, but let's say a lower number, like 75 or something like that, this hypothetical, could the property line be moved to a place where the density is still the same? So instead of 17 acres, it becomes whatever that is.
Well, of course, it's a, it's a, it's a white, it's a blank canvas, so, yeah.
Okay.
But.
I mean, I'll let them.
Candidly, a number, we're sort of, well, I don't know. This is, this is, it's tough because you have the requirement, you know, the case law and everything, and I think the town is not, is not in jeopardy of that. I think some of the villages might be providing affordable housing. And it's that, it's that tipping point between, you know, what the community will accept and what the sponsors, where it makes sense.
And on one side of this, the density is higher than six units per acre currently, right? There's a mobile home park on one side of it?
Well, that's like, maybe they're on 4,000 square foot pads or something like that, yeah.
Right. And then on the other side, though, it's what, half acre or one acre zone?
Yeah, but it's, it's also a mixed-use area, so we didn't think from an impact on the character of the neighborhood, it would be, it's actually, it's actually almost a perfect place for it.
All right. Let's, let's allow your, the main person.
Jonathan.
Developer to present.
Okay.
Thank you. There are paper copies in the, in the box there. Just wanted to.
Were we able to get the slides?
Yeah, I think this is there.
We have to scan the thumb drive upstairs and just wait until it appears on the mic. Jim? There you go.
All right, you can begin.
Okay. Jonathan Gertman, Vice President of Development with the NRP Group. Very pleased to be back in front of you today. We have a presentation. It's, some of it will hopefully be familiar from March, but we didn't want to assume. There's a lot that's happened since then, but we'll try to move, you know, expeditiously towards that. And of course, please feel free to interrupt or, you know, happy to have this be conversational. And I'll be joined by my colleague, Miles Monahan, who was introduced earlier by Mr. Bennett. Just moving right along, we're just going to cover, you know, four basic sections through the contents, and then, Janice, if I could trouble you, we can even go all the way to page four.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll just keep going. So you'll see, as John introduced, you know, five sort of key core members of the team, and then we're very glad to be joined by the Strebbles family, who, a little bit to the earlier conversation, have been, you know, very good partners with us in helping to work ourselves down to that 104 number in a way that would be feasible. And that's been a conversation that they were, you know, very happily, thankfully amenable to. You know, our approach, NRP is a national developer builder. We specialize in affordable housing, though we do also luxury market rate housing. To sort of paraphrase Fabio, our, you know, best compliment is like, I can't believe it's affordable. And hopefully, you'll get a sense of that in our presentation, and if you sort of have a chance to look at us offline, or rather, online. And then working with our local experts, who are very familiar with the, with the local municipalities and local areas, to develop something that is, you know, welcomed, hopefully, and contextual and right for the community. Just a little bit more on NRP as we go to page five. You know, I'd say the financial strength and experience across the country, again with local partners that bring that local expertise, and that's especially true over these last seven months. We've continued to build right through COVID, you know, following, obviously, local regulations and making sure construction sites are safe and, you know, bringing in the best protocols. But we have constructed, we have begun construction on 15 projects, actually, just since the beginning of COVID. And I think that's a real testament to the strength of the company, and, you know, and I say that with humility. Going to slide six, just to give you a feel for actual NRP buildings, illustrative, but the kind of quality you can expect and thoughtfulness and attention to detail. And then, of course, BHC Architects, which have, you know, been extremely active in the region and, you know, working the design to something that will be, I think, exciting for the town and for the residents, and that's very much a work in progress. But just to give you a sense, again, of the quality, scale, especially the two-story building, when you look at maybe the bottom left, for example, of what we expect to see here, very much, very early on in the, in the sort of vertical design, if you will, versus the site design, which we've spent much time with, which we'll discuss in just a little bit. Going to section two, just a little bit of an overview of the workforce housing landscape. No real secrets here, but just to sort of give a sense of where we're coming from, my colleague, Miles, is going to walk us through that.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us. Miles Monahan, developer with the NRP Group. So just wanted to cover really quickly kind of the demand for workforce housing in the town of Southampton. I know some of this may be, or may feel like we're kind of preaching to the choir, and we've, we understand you guys have been very successful at addressing some of the needs here. But really, the issues that brought us here originally have only been kind of exacerbated since we last came in. COVID-19 has both illuminated the need for workforce housing options for essential workers, but it's also really exacerbated the supply issue. There is just a lack of housing options for workforce incomes in the town of Southampton. And elected officials like yourselves have recognized that, that need and have kind of addressed it with some successful developments, but the need just continues to be unmet. So really, what's kind of causing that? Wanted to quickly kind of address, it's a twofold problem, supply and demand. Insufficient supply of multifamily construction over the last several decades and spikes in seasonal vacationers that kind of pay premiums on temporary rentals and kind of squeeze the existing supply. So what does that look like in terms of the numbers? The effect is 30% of renters in Southampton are spending more than half of their income on housing costs. The threshold kind of through third parties and nonprofits, as well as HUD, say that 30% of your income should be spent on housing costs. The town of Southampton needs more than 6,000 units of workforce housing, and that's been identified through, through the work that you guys have done here. And so when we talk about workforce housing, like, who are we talking about serving? And really, this crisis, this pandemic, has expanded our perception of who essential workers are. Traditionally, we've thought of them as police officers, firefighters, teachers. I think now we can all appreciate that that is really a broader category and includes post office, post office workers, grocery store workers, healthcare technicians, clinics, and those folks that really keep our communities safe, healthy, operating during, during all times. And fortunately, what we're proposing here today addresses the incomes that individuals like that really earn. And just to quickly highlight that, we're planning to serve area median incomes between 30% of AMI and 80% of AMI, and those are tagged to the Suffolk County-wide 100% of AMI, the middle income of $126,000 a year, which I think we can all appreciate. Many households don't earn that, and that's why we're here to kind of talk about serving folks who earn below that. Just to quickly highlight, really, your work and other elected officials like you on the East End have spoken about the need to expand options for workforce housing, and specifically, you know, to developments. As you mentioned earlier, Supervisor Schneiderman, Sandy Hollow Cove is a project that, you know, we're drawing some inspiration from, and Spion Commons. So to kick that off into our plan, I'm going to kick it back to Jonathan Gertman, my colleague, and he'll discuss what we are proposing.
Thank you. It's with great admiration that we use your quotes against you, Supervisor. The foundation of our plan is a very specific site that, well, is then informed by, you know, ongoing input, and I think that's been especially true, and we hope to be able to demonstrate that over the last year since we initially made our first application to be heard and since we saw you in March. And we didn't, we didn't come to Southampton saying, we have to, we got to build here, like, this is really where we want to be. This opportunity really presented itself, and this amazing site, and looking at it and saying, huh, this, this really seems to be ideal location, the uses, the history of the property, and then understanding, you know, the need, which of course is somewhat intuitive, given where we are, but then really learning everything we've learned, as Miles described. So it's really based in this specific opportunity. And, you know, we go in, I'll go into that more on the next page, 17, where you see, you know, it's, we're using the, one of the two parcels, address of South Country Road to highlight that, you know, even though it's, the large parcel is currently part of Strebbles, which has a Montauk Highway address, this property is actually exclusively accessed through South Country, not adding really any impact to Montauk Highway at all. I think that's something that probably wasn't as clear when we first came. And it really does not represent an environmental preservation value. You can start to see sort of some of the sand pits and the existing conditions. This is, you know, has a history as a disturbed site. Obviously, the mix of uses around it sort of suggests that the impacts, which of course would be, you know, more formally presented, should we be invited to make formal application, but you kind of get a feel, given the surrounding uses, it's a, it's a bit of a maybe transition property from, you have the salvage yard, you have the mobile home park, you have a commercial use, and then, of course, you start to get into residential areas, one of which actually in particular started as an income-restricted, for-sale home, a mixed income property to the north. And you get a sense that there's no displacement, you have the road network, and really why, probably why we were so attracted to this opportunity specifically. And then here, we just wanted to, you know, again, call attention that we've, what you see today is very much part of a robust process with, with multiple stakeholders, and, you know, hopefully, as indicative, shows the, sort of the spirit that we're coming and that will continue to come through the process, which we know, should we go forward, will be an iterative one. And just to highlight that, you know, we came with an initial concept presentation. We came here, we went to the community for input, we went to the planning staff. The double-sided arrows are meant to show the back and forth. And, you know, in particular, we really appreciated working with the town planner, with Janice, who's, you know, really been a great, just partner in helping to provide direction and help us understand, you know, what would be good for the town. And then we come back today with this revised concept presentation. Going to the next slide, and here you start to see the illustrations of the revised plan in concept, which, and then we'll go further into it. You know, we, we heard the concern around 180 units, and we've made a drastic alteration over time. It wasn't immediate, but we've sort of worked down to 104, and as I mentioned before, the Strebbles, you know, were a very important partner in making that feasible.
Can I ask you?
Please.
In arriving at 104, you said there was a back and forth with the community?
Yes.
Was that your sense that the community would support that number? How did you come up with 104?
That, I mean, we went with an interim number even at that point, and then the 104, you know, we, there, we, I think the community, I always hasn't to speak for folks, but, you know, our sense was that less than 180, definitely. I don't think we would have needed to come necessarily all the way to 104, but given the zoning, sort of, the codes as they exist, the six units an acre, it became clear, was a basis for a number. And I think that was one of the things that we struggled with through the process with, with multiple stakeholders, was 180 felt like a lot. There was definitely precedent for it in terms of density, but this is a large site. How do you balance, you know, wanting to take advantage of the fact that these types of properties are rare, but also that, you know, this sort of a single development would be significant for the town? And ultimately, I think everybody felt comfortable when there's a base, you know, a real basis for it, us, too. We don't want to just be picking a number. The 180 was based on that, coming off of that initial sort of 12 units an acre that we had in mind. Even below that, it was a 10 units an acre, just about. But then with the MF44, the six units an acre, that was sort of the ultimate sort of fallback, if you will, of, there's a basis for this, there's a, there's a reason, if you will. It's less than the 180. It's understood to be still significant. It's contextual with the size of the property. We can make it feasible, you know, thanks to working with the ownership. Here's something that makes sense, that sort of meets that, that limit line of feasibility.
If, 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 I just, the only time I'll interrupt.
Please.
John, you're going to.
What makes sense about it?
Have to go to the microphone. Have to go to the microphone, otherwise...
What makes sense about it is, obviously, this type of density has been part of the town code for many years. There's been a finding, there's original finding, that this is an appropriate amount of density in a multifamily setting, so it's not really an out-of-the-box sort of thinking. It's trying to really pitch ourselves into a type of density that the town code itself recognizes, so I think...
There's a caveat there, though, in the code, as you mentioned, that it's, that density is assumed to be okay up to 75 years.
Yeah, but I think, as Janice said, when you get affordable housing here...
That, yes, except that I forgot about the nonprofit part, so it has to be bona fide nonprofit. So you have to figure that...
Either can work through that and/or go through the zoning board of appeals. I get, there's a mechanism, there's a way to get there. There's a way to get there, but of course, candidly, we're not interested in doing it without a willing partner.
Of course.
Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, that's...
You know, and I'm not, I'm not sure...
No, I know, you're exploring, you're pushing. You're asking the right question, you're asking the hard, right question.
Right.
Surely, if you have a density that, you know, listen, it's the Southampton Town Code, you don't see densities, this is one of the higher densities, probably as high as any density that you see in the town code. And what that means, however, is that from an overall, you know, master plan point of view, and from an overall density, the way the master plan looked at these things in terms of, you know, impact on groundwater, all that sort of stuff, and impact on density, impact on potential growth and everything, six units from an acre is not, is not an unusual thing. The other thing I just want to quickly mention is this site is disturbed by certain land uses, maybe some, I'm not sure, but maybe some, looked like maybe this might have been some sand mining that went on at certain times that happened all over in the town of Southampton. But I'm very sensitive to this because this is not anywhere, this is not a brown field or anything, this is not like putting, you know, workforce housing in an area that's been challenged, some sort of like, you know, prior industrial ghetto or something like that, far from it. This is actually disturbed, there's probably successional field growth. You know, 100 years ago, out here, everything was cleared. So I don't want you to get the impression that this is some sort of environmentally challenged site, far from it. But anyway...
Just to that point, before you go, John, two issues. One is, you're making a hopeful assumption that the zoning board of appeals would accept that reduction in units.
Well...
What the land allows for right now is 75, I believe.
Yeah, unless there's, there would be two, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
So I just want to, you know, make that for everyone's identification, that that's...
You know, that's true, that's true.
There's a certain condition that's associated with you getting to that place, and hopefully, you know, the town would work together if we went forward with it on that. The other is, there also was an issue, as I understand it, regarding the use of the dry cleaning facility, was there a, there was a part of the property, I don't know, Mr. Strebbles, if that had been...
It would still remain, we'd carve that off.
You would take that out.
But the...
I just want to be sure we got the boundaries drawn.
I will tell you, though, the Strebbles are on the forefront of things like recycling and stuff like that, in terms of the...
No, no, that's great, just want to be clear about everything that's there.
Really cutting-edge operators over there. I think that's been common knowledge for years. Let me demonstrate it to you if you wanted. But I think, you know, the idea was to fit it into a density provision that was not a stranger to the town code. I'm sorry for the...
Yeah, no, thank you.
Not at all.
And on the nonprofit point as well, I mean, we regularly, regularly partner with nonprofits to, who become owners of, you know, these properties over the long term, and if that's the path, again, I mean, coming in the spirit of, you know, partnership and...
Is there federal housing credits on this project?
There would be tax credits to build this, yes.
So you have to have a non-profit partner, don't you?
Not for the tax credits, but just by the local code, if that was required.
Okay.
May I ask a quick question?
Please.
You said that, I know you said you don't like to speak on behalf of the community, but it says here that you also had a dialogue with the West Hampton Beach Superintendent of Schools.
We did, yes.
Give us the gist of that.
Yes, he was very receptive. We actually went with the 180, did not have any sort of, you know, allergic reaction or bad reaction, felt that there was capacity, and had a really productive conversation, absolutely. You know, mentioned a little bit of tightness in the middle school right now, and, you know, clearly was anticipating an uptick in enrollment based on what he was seeing with COVID, but very favorable. And then, you know, I will say, we did speak with Thelma Carter, who runs the Quiag Association, about this 104, she was, and gave us her, you know, imprimatur, but I wouldn't want to speak for all of the community.
Thanks.
Just also a good question. John Schneider was originally part of your team, had made some, you know, I'd spoken to him on the phone.
Yes.
He's still part of your group? I didn't see him. Oh, there you are, John, okay. Just wanted to see what happened to you, if you're out in the parking lot.
He's hiding behind his mask. He's got a large mask on, you can't see him.
Still a very critical part of our team, uncharacteristically quiet today by design, but...
So far.
Very important in helping us get here. So continuing to the next page, which ends up being page 20, where you really see the revised plan come to life, and we'll cover this a couple of times, and I hope you all received, I think I see one, the full-size set of plans was hastily FedExed by me on Saturday, so thank you for, you know, hate to not work through our esteemed attorney, but just in the interest of time, I sent them directly, and appreciate folks accepting them a little bit out of protocol. The exciting thing here is, I think we've come, you know, to a, we obviously have a much smaller in terms of footprint plan, which means we have a ton of undisturbed and really what will be reclaimed, replanted, improved property from what you would currently see on the existing conditions, the sand pits go away, we plant, we, you know, clean up unfavorable growing conditions, we preserve between 40 and 50% of the site, significant setbacks, more so than we were originally showing to any of the surrounding property uses, a bit more, the thought was a little more of an organic feeling plan, if you will, something that hopefully won't look over time like it was necessarily built all at once, a little less rigidity, exclusive access off of South Country, and then a bedroom mix that we think, you know, makes sort of more sense at the scale. Going on, you know, walkable paths, bocce ball, a play area, fitness, you know, opportunity for outdoor fitness, clubhouse, of course, all the things that, you know, anybody would want in a community like this, you know, especially in today's world. Page 21, I won't...
Let's just go back to that diagram for a second.
Sure.
And I know this isn't finalized in any way, because obviously you have to go through site plan. This is conceptual. You're showing an STP, I see.
Yes.
You'd have to have a sewage treatment plant. Where is that leaching? Is that, is there an idea where the leach field is for that?
I'm going to defer to...
That's all right, you know, I don't need to know necessarily right now, and then you just...
So one thing I will just say about the STP, based on the revised density and the recent regulations passed by the county, this actually is a much smaller system than was previously required. So we are, we do have all of the setbacks in place, all on the property, all of the, you know, required areas around the plant itself are there.
But to my word, tertiary treatment, though. It's tertiary treatment. It's not like some IA system or something like that with some limited, you know, reduction of nitrogen, it's, it's, it's...
It's a sewage treatment plant.
It's a sewage treatment plant, so water's coming out clean.
Right, okay.
Well, it's coming out at a certain level, milligrams per nitrogen.
It's somewhere that's a leach field for it.
I just, I wanted, it's a sewage, that's John, that's my question.
But after it's treated, it still has to be recharged, so somewhere there's a recharge area.
Well, the recharge fields, there's subterranean recharge fields.
I understand, I just was wondering if...
Oh, it's shown, that's all.
It's shown as wooded, but this would probably be...
But that's it under there.
Yeah, and the nice thing about it also is, I will demonstrate this, but I can almost, I'm sure, where does this stuff go? You know, prevalent flow of groundwater ultimately ends up out in the ocean, so you worry if there are any wells in between it. My guess is, we'll be able to demonstrate that, I can't say this is a pure matter of fact, but my guess is that everybody's serviced by public groundwater along the flow of groundwater. So I doubt there'll be any impact, but we'll show you that, if we're going forward, we'll show you that as part of the...
I know, my question doesn't have to be answered right now, I just was wondering if you knew, but that's okay. And then the, the building that's identified as, it's this lease club or something?
Yes.
That's common space, is that...
Yes.
That's your clubhouse?
Yes, fitness, clubhouse, offices for onsite management.
Community rooms, is it, is it big enough to, for 100 apartments, 104 apartments?
Yes, absolutely, definitely. We, you know, we even regularly say, say the Quiag Association wanted to have their, you know, monthly meetings there, that's something we regularly do, if we can will ourselves to imagine that that's something that might happen again in our lives, which I think it will, just keep your faith. You know, that's something that, you know, we welcome and love, that sort of community interaction.
If the renter, and this is all rent, right? That's not owned?
Yes.
So if the renters wanted, let's say, to have whatever, a movie or play card games or something, they could use...
Absolutely. We will, you know, do community programming, that's part of sort of NRP, we have onsite management, onsite staff every day, and then if they want to, you know, if there's a 16th birthday or a retirement party, what have you, that can become available for private use.
You said onsite management, so one of the four units is for a manager?
We will have a, typically would have a live-in superintendent, yes, but then also just staff that work, you know, in working hours.
Right, so but of the 104 that you're proposing, one is a manager's apartment?
One of those would be a superintendent.
Okay, all right.
So while you're, while you're on the question of STPs and other things, what, are you going to be talking about alternative energy and how you're going to help us meet our goal of trying to reduce your power consumption?
I am going to speak to that at a later time in this presentation.
All right, so let's keep going.
The next slide, we won't dwell on too, too much, but we, you know, we do want to highlight just the significance of the reduction. I mean, again, I think, sort of, putting context around these numbers, which can seem just sort of ethereal, 180, 160, 120, 104, and what does that actually mean? And obviously, this is a preliminary analysis by Nelson Pope and Voorhees staff, and Mike is here with us, but just to give a feel for, you know, based on their, you know, best practice calculations, what would this mean? And even just, you know, bedroom from the initial proposal now is 43% lower, impact on schoolchildren, 50% lower, vehicle trips, the unit count we mentioned is over 40% lower. So, again, it can be easy to just sort of throw around numbers, but trying to give a feel for contextualizing and grounding and, you know, what the significance, since we last saw you, of the reduction is, and you'll have this for...
Does your model include the pilot program?
In terms of...
It's not going to lower taxes yet to the school district.
We have not, we have not done a financial analysis yet.
Okay. Janice, we typically will require that, right?
Absolutely.
That there is a...
An analysis of the tax benefit, you know, comparison.
The property itself, would it be off the tax rules, on the tax rules?
Yeah, if it's not...
Still on the tax rules?
It is, but they typically, affordable housing developments negotiate pilots versus paying...
That's, all depends on if it's non-profit or not.
Yeah.
If it's not, if it's off the tax rules, then you would negotiate a pilot. If it's on a tax rules, you just assess like any other...
Assess it, right. Okay, so I guess that would depend on the structure of whose building?
Yes, even with a nonprofit owner, because of the way the tax credit partnerships are set up, it's a, it's a for-profit, it's a, it can be owned by a nonprofit, but there's an umbrella to a for-profit. We would seek a pilot, and we would study the, you know, the fiscal impacts as part of a formal application and provide an analysis.
Right.
And there would be a parcel that would be divided off of this property that would still be a taxable property, that's a laundry mat?
Yes. But, I mean, this property will pay taxes.
Okay.
One way or another, either through a pilot or through regular...
Yes.
Okay.
And jumping ahead to 22, again, the vertical design is very much preliminary and going to be something we're going to work on very much together, and of course, other bodies will weigh in as well. But wanted to just lay out some principles, and one is contextual design, a residential feel, we do not want this to seem institutional in any way, we want it to seem very natural when folks drive by in five years or 10 years or any time that just looks like a beautiful Southampton community. You know, some diversity of design, not monolithic, all the things that make neighborhoods interesting and attractive, and, you know, rooted and grounded, but hopefully also some elements of, you know, surprise and enjoyment. And then sustainable design is something obviously very important to you, very important to us, very important to the funders that make these projects feasible, so we will absolutely have a state-of-the-art, you know, construction methods, energy methods, and we've become very active and interested with alternative energy as well, particularly solar, which, you know, is just such an obvious one, and thankfully, you know, New York State, I actually don't have specific experience yet with Leipa, but, which, is it still even Leipa? I know that that's always a...
Yeah, it's still there.
Excuse me, Leipa, but, for example, with Con Ed in Westchester, where we've just broken ground on a large market rate development, we have solar panels on top of all the roofs, that's the biggest installation we've actually done as a company to date, we're really excited about that. We will meet Energy Star use of appliances, we'll meet enterprise green community certification, so multiple paths in terms of building envelope and energy production. And then, of course, so right to two sides of that, one is really limiting use, and that's through the energy code and envelope tightness and materials, and then even trying to produce some of our own energy to offset the impact. And then, you know, other aspects, of course, water preservation with low flow, appliances, plumbing, bicycle racks to encourage, you know, alternate transportation, EV charging, even on affordable property, I mean, that is coming, that is happening, obviously, very rapidly, and, you know, becoming an option across the, you know, the cost spectrum, thankfully, on the automobile side. So lots of different ways to approach that, and definitely will be, you know, a robust and sort of diverse attack on the sustainability side.
Before you move on, John, did you have any questions about that? That was the issue you brought up earlier?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So, you know, just John sort of covered a lot of this, and we can, I don't want to belabor it, but happy to, you know, to go back to anything, but obviously, we think this is an ideal site, we hope we've made the case for that. We think that, you know, the six units an acre is, you know, rooted in the town code with obviously certain modifications, certainly well below the precedent that you all have set on a couple of successful projects, though we recognize this is both a big property and a big opportunity, in line, of course, with the town code, and, you know, we think just really well-suited to move forward. And then, in next steps, you may remember the couple of nice quotes we included about us, since we're still new to the community, and our goal and our hope to become part of this community. So with that, obviously, any additional questions for myself or John, any members of the team, but that would be the end of the formal presentation.
I have a question, maybe for Janice, though. After their first presentation in March, you had submitted a report to us.
Yes.
Can you do the same for this new?
Yes, and I had hoped to, but I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to get it for today, but I can revise that report and submit it, sure.
Thanks.
That'd be, that'd be helpful, I'd be very proud of it.
Absolutely.
Is there public bus transportation near this site?
Montauk.
Montauk Highway is the closest, okay.
Although, I don't know, the S-92 and...
I don't know if even stops there.
Well, no, it's still, they have, they haven't cut that one yet.
Okay, it's the only one left.
Yeah.
How far is this from the train station?
Far.
It's a long, it's a distance.
Yeah, bike ride or...
Is that, is that the turn where the boat, the marinas are? Just up there, there's...
Here's your closest, like, village of...
I guess that's where the difference, right? You're having the access to it off of Old Country Road or Country Road, as opposed to Montauk. But you still have to access Country Road from Montauk. How do you do it from the west side, I mean, east side? You have to go down and come up?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, just from the sense, the access off South Country, and just in terms of a sense of place, you know, you're driving on, on the old road and making a left into the village, it's not gonna, it's not gonna see, you're not gonna feel much of a change at all. It won't be visible.
Yeah, no, I'm.
No, no, I know, that's, that's.
In terms, in terms of traffic, though, does?
This is South Country here.
Does your company ever provide transportation types of services if people wanted to go downtown? Is it like a shuttle van, a bus or a van? Just to reduce the amount of cars, not that 104 units is that many.
I know that it would have to.
We've seen subdivisions with more than that, but.
I'd have to, I don't want to bite off on that yet. We could look at it, but I would have to do a cost benefit analysis. I mean, maybe it's just not that big of a development.
We can't hear you, John.
I'm so sorry.
It's not that big of a development, but there is a locational standard, I think, in the code for this category that you won't meet. So somebody would have to waive that locational standard.
Yeah, that's true.
And one mitigating measure could be a transportation service. That you're not walking distance to downtown, but you're providing a way for people to get to downtown without a vehicle, so. It's just a thought.
It's not that far into the village. It doesn't meet the standard, but, I don't know, you're looking at a guy who rode eight miles on his bike this morning before the meeting, so. It doesn't seem to be that much, but it's certainly something we'd look at, yeah. And, and, you know, it's gonna have to be part of the dialogue. I just don't want to.
I know, you don't want to make a commitment to something like that.
No, but I'm anxious to see the planning report to, and then.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, we, we do have experience with, with running shuttles. It's, it's expensive. And on these projects where, you know, you're already building something that is income restricted, so very much limiting cash flow. And is subject to the review by all of the funding sources, it can be very challenging. I do want to.
Likely, well, not us, but the planning board, they would do some sort of traffic analysis as part of SECRE?
No, you would do it, because this is all in your realm, because it's a floating zone. You're landing a zone here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is all, you're the lead agency in this case.
All right, but not yet, right? So the SECRE would, well, once we elected to consider.
And they gave a formal presentation, then we would coordinate SECRE with the planning board and any other, you know, agency that's involved. And, you know, say, assume lead agency, and then you would conduct the review through.
Right, and to assist the board in making the decision on whether we'll even consider a zone change, you're gonna do a report?
Yes, so we gave you a preliminary report, and, I'm sorry?
And you'll make a recommendation whether you think it's worthy of the next step?
If you want me to, I will. Yes, I will, absolutely.
Okay, typically, that's like two weeks or three weeks? How much time do you need to do that?
Not much, because we already did the report, so we just have to.
You did the report on the 180?
Yes, so it's just kind of revising that back to what's, what is being proposed now.
Can you refresh my memory of what your conclusion on the 180 was?
We did not recommend 180. That density was too much. And there was significant issues with, you know, are they nonprofit? It's not, you know, all these kind of, like, putting that overlay on it to get to 12 or 10 units an acre was not. We didn't necessarily not recommend it, but we were concerned about the density there. So, in this case, I just want to make the point that the multifamily housing large that you see on the screen, it says, no more than 40, but no more, but, more than 40, but no greater than 75. And then it says, if you are doing greater than 75, it has to be treated as a PDD. So we never really fixed the section of the code when you eliminated PDDs to handle that, so you might want to think.
Inherently flawed.
You might want to think about that, just because that was, it was basically saying, this is available up to 75. If you want to go beyond 75, you come through the PDD process.
Did we eliminate the MFPRD?
This is the MFPRD.
This is the MF.
No, it's just that, that big granddaddy P, P, essentially, you could write the zoning for, for the, for the, for the lot. You took that out, you took that.
See, so it says.
Flexibility out for any projects.
Right, so it's, hmm, it's a little bit tricky, because it's saying if you want to go above 75, you need to do it through a section of the code that.
It's no longer there, yeah.
So that would be good.
But it recognized.
But you could do it potentially through the zoning board.
Again, my thought on that is that if we had your support, we could clearly meet the five-part standard for variance and community support, hopefully. It just, it just is a lot less cumbersome than a code change, I think. Janice, you tell me.
Well, going to a quasi-judicial board when you're in front of a legislative body doesn't make too much sense to me. Like, why go to them when you've got the legislators here? So that's the only part.
Only because, only because I've been involved in the private side on zone changes before.
Well, we have to.
You have to refer it, there's a whole different layer. I, I'm just, you know, if, obviously, if the board wants, was, had the will to change the code, that's the easier way to do it. I was just trying to create less political concern about it, because when you do that, then you have to study its impact, not only on this parcel, but its.
That's true. That is a good point.
How wide impact, and that gets very cumbersome. And, and in my experience, leads to some understandable trepidation on, on the board, on the part of the board members. That, that's my only thought on that.
It's, it's not a bad point, actually. He does make a good point.
There's a number of different ways you could approach this, and we could look at that and say, does this limitation of 75 still make sense in light of such a dire need for affordable housing?
We certainly have to clean up that provision of the code anyway.
Yeah, but I don't want to conflate those two things.
No, no.
There is options here, and Janice will.
Well, I'll present the options, and you could think about, and I don't, you know, you can tell us if that 330-8, there was that question in the original report, whether or not you could fulfill that being a bona fide nonprofit. Then you could increase the density to the level you're comfortable with, using that as another additional overlay, which was what they initially proposed, but at a level that no one was comfortable with. So now they've brought it down, so if you're at the number you're comfortable with, you might just do the 330-8 overlay to account for it. So you don't need a ZBA, and you don't need to change the code. That would be what I would say is the easiest way.
What, what category is that? Is it still?
That's affordable housing overlay, you know, 330-8.
And that applies to all zoning districts? It's a, a density bonus?
Yes.
We were offering it as a condition to the zone change, obviously.
So?
But, no, we were offering just.
So you could put it in MF44 with the overlay, and that would get you to this number without having to go to the zoning board?
Yes.
As long as you want.
Just we require the appropriate structure.
Yes.
And you'll explain that in your report.
And what's, what's the conditions on that? You have, that it's a not-for-profit?
Well, the conditions are those, that difference. So say, you can only get to 75, but you want 104. The difference between 75 and 104 has to be at the lower AMI. Those units need to be restricted.
They're proposing a lot of lower AMI.
Right, so those, that's where.
They're going down to 30%. We haven't even seen that really very often.
Right, so 29 unit, right, 29 units would have to be in that restricted category in order to be taking advantage of this.
I don't see that as the challenge, because it's part, that's part of the plan, the, it's the structure. Maybe, it may not be a challenge, but it's the not-for-profit structure and partnering, so that's where.
Yeah.
And again, I don't want to, I don't want to commit to that right now. It's got to be explored.
There's a bunch of different ways to get there.
Different avenues, yeah.
There's also development rights we do, you know, for affordable housing that might be an avenue you want to consider. The town allocating.
I personally would like to see these, you know, as openly out in front of us. You know, we can talk here all day long, but we're not going to get anywhere.
So I'll give you the.
Well, there's different pathways to get there. Sorry, it sounds like a national election. There's different ways to get there. The, I think the question is the number itself, right? So let's say, you know, 104 is something we would consider, then we can work on the pathways. If we aren't going to consider up to 104, if we're going to consider a lower number, then it may be different pathways.
That's fair.
Yeah, and so we're gonna look at those when it comes from planning.
The reason I got up, because you should raise traffic, and obviously, we're gonna have to have some site-specific analysis. But the traffic numbers that you're seeing in there, without even asking, Mike, I'm sure they're from the ITT rate manuals, which turn out to be pretty good. So that's a decent, that's a decent concept of what kind of traffic generation is going on here. Most of the traffic engineers on Long Island, when they look at something like this, they say, you know, that's a drop in the bucket. I realize they're from the west, but even from an objective point of view, this type of development, residential development, you can pretty much rely on those ITT figures in our, in our report, and I don't see it as a big generator. Of course, we'd have to look at its impact on the road itself, but I think from a numbers point, you probably, that's a, that's a pretty good, pretty good idea.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question about what you have on page 12, the AMI numbers. I know we did go over it. I'd like to underscore that a little bit. And just kind of discuss and quantify who or what income range is we are identifying as affordable.
Certainly. 30 to 80%, the exact mix isn't determined. I mean, that would be a conversation with you all, a conversation with the state, which ultimately allocates the tax credits, which help with the funding. But within this range. Typically, the ultimate project will average to between 55 and 60% AMI.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
Say it again?
Typically, you'll, this mix will average to that 55 to 60% number. So just a simple example, if you had, you know, nine, if you had 90% 60s, you'd have 5% 50s and 5% 80s. Sorry, that wouldn't work. It's that, shame on me for trying to do math live. But essentially, the point I'm trying to make is you'll have some large number of the 60s, and then 50s, 30s, and 80s. And on that weight scale, you'll come in in that 55 to 60% AMI range. I don't know if I made things wrong.
But to be fair to say, let's say we round to 100 units, do you have basically 25 in each category? Is it going to have an equal amount in the 30%, 50%, 60% or 80%? Or are you looking to have a different distribution?
I would say the, the weight is in the 50, 60 range. And then the sort of curve barbells in the 30 and 80.
More like 10, 40, 40, 10, something like that?
Something more like that.
And then in terms of the?
Maybe 20 on the 30, that's a need.
And there would be income qualifications to rent?
Absolutely. So you're qualified, so you submit, and we're, and we have a whole compliance department that manages that. It's, you know, part of the onsite management. You submit your paperwork, you submit your asset statement, income verification. You know, you need to make two and a half times the rent. You need to be qualified and be able to pay it. But obviously, can't make too much money, so it's, you know, finding that balance, because we need people who are, you know, rent-paying, you know, working folks.
So one bedroom at, at $1,087 rent would be roughly someone who makes $47,000 a year, which is kind of a second-year teacher kind of, or, or police officer or construction manager?
Teacher, yes.
Okay.
I think the other two are getting toward, the, the construction manager.
Entry level.
Very entry level, yes.
Okay, right, all right. I, you know, I'm just.
And probably no police off, I think all of your police officers make more than that, but, yes, yes. Is it that one? Okay.
Which, what was the, the number?
The, the 47, 500.
47.
Okay.
They probably make it a little more than that, starting, no, starting right around there.
And so if an individual makes, you know, $76,000, they would have to pay $1,900 a month, right?
Exactly right. Yes, it's qualified. What's that?
And this would be open for people in different income categories and brackets?
Yes, so the, and then it'll be fixed, so the, the percentages will, but at the time we close and start construction, that will be set, and that's set for a minimum of 30 years.
Well, you had that broken down for the 104 of 30 or 40.
I think I had the, we had the unit mix in there.
Like that?
We had the unit mix.
Yeah.
A proposed unit mix, but not the exact income breakdown yet.
All right.
And you said that it's, that number is set for a minimum of 30 years. What happens after 30 years?
Typically, we're electing to keep it affordable for longer, so up to 50 years, but eventually, that income restriction can burn off.
It's the market, eventually, it'll go to market, like all of those plans, even the New York City plan, but it's a long time.
Well, it's 30 years, and a board in 2050 or 2051 or two, whatever, they won't, the, the town will have no say in, in what happens to this unit in 2050.
It would not on that, that's right. What typically.
To market price.
Happens is it gets, you know, after 15 years, the property is ready for a refresh. Well, it's called re-syndication, you go back, get new credits, fix up the property, and that starts the clock again. That's a very typical situation. Certainly, our business plan isn't, you know, oh, in 30 years, we'll have all these market rate units in Southampton. We're really, you know, we are in the affordable housing business.
Okay. I would be hoping to read the paper at that particular time. Okay, thank you. I look forward to the report, Janice.
Sure.
Rick, you have any questions?
No, Tommy and John actually asked the same questions, but I just want to check with John. John, the community input was positive? You know that?
It was mixed. The, you know, the units that they were talking about was 80 and under. That's sort of the, what was floating around. This is new to me. So I think in some ways, you know, we need to take that back to the community.
When you say 80 and under, the number of units or?
Yeah, the number of units.
Number of units was 80, okay.
I think the housing plan that Diana's working on will inform this a little better, I'm hopeful. I mean, I don't, I like this mix. It's better than what was, what we were seeing before, particularly with market value housing and things like that. I think that's a, I mean, to answer your question, I'm not sure.
You know, the, you know, what we have, the balance, it's always, you know, the difficulty is making.
Right.
That decision. We know we need it. That's like, that's a given. We need thousands of units for.
And you did approach the school district?
But, you know, where to put them and how to develop it, that's always the question. It gets harder and harder, because there's economy of scale, and there's the cost of land. You know, you try to reduce it too much, and the project falls apart, because no longer works financially. So it's, it's not easy. We go through this all the time. We have to ultimately, we're elected representatives of the community, and we've got to figure out the best way to address these issues with all those community concerns as part of the calculus. All right, anyone else?
And we, we did speak to the superintendent, yes.
You spoke to the superintendent. Was the board involved in this? And I'm not saying that they're.
Sure.
Giving their approval, but they are in communication with.
He did commit to speaking to the board, and I don't know that we specifically heard feedback afterwards. John, did we?
Right, and they don't generally necessarily give input on zoning, but they are aware of this and all of that. I mean, this, the site, it, to me, it seemed like a good site, because of the previous disturbed nature, because of the use surrounding the site.
And as a reminder, it, it's the West Hampton School District.
Right.
We spoke to the West Hamton.
West Ham Beach School District.
Yeah, we, we spoke to that superintendent.
And like Jay said, the supervisor said, we do need housing in the town of Southampton.
Well, I mean, you know, to answer your, your question, you know, the discussion was, well, we've, you know, we've done some things already on the west end of town. We know the need is on the east end. You get this diverse sort of attitude towards this issue. And most, most of the need focused on economic, at least in the housing studies survey on that side.
And John, that was at the CAC West, but it was based on a number of 80 units?
It wasn't based on it. That was the sense that the community was giving, that that was more acceptable to them.
So we, we presented 180 at the CAC West back in May. Clearly heard concerns around environmental impact, you know, wastewater, traffic concerns, and that that was a high number, absolutely. Since we came down to 104, we did specific reach out back to leadership, like Thelma, like Craig, you know, like Hank Beck, rest in peace, to that 104. We did not go back to the full board meeting, excuse me. We just sort of heard that initial reaction to the 180, and then spoke to select individuals.
Thank you.
Does that, all right.
Any other questions?
No, I, personally, I think it's a great location, and I, you know, it's, there's definitely a need across the town for affordable housing. The rates, to me, look, you know, well for anybody in that situation that needs housing. So, you know, as long as the community's there, I think I could support it.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's always a, a difficult thing to balance, you know, so it's, it's a, that's a hard one. It's not, it's not a. It's not, it's not a vote. It's a community leadership group. You know, do they speak for the wider community, that type of thing? I think we'll get some feedback after this work session. That would be really helpful to that and Janice's reports will have a little bit, we'll be informed a little better from that respect.
So in terms of the number, and it sounds like the response to the one eighty was reduce it and you cut it by forty percent. And the forty percent, that's what you thought kind of presumed might be more acceptable to the community?
But it also slid into a density
Right.
model in the zoning code.
At six units an acre, yeah.
Yeah, it was to strip off the overlay zoning and that's what they, that was a way to maybe achieve that goal. And that was the suggestion of why they go and talk, go back and talk with planning to get to that point.
Again, I...
Isn't that amount a calculus as well?
No, I understand.
As you say, as you said, at this certain point, it's...
Well, if you pick, if you only, if you did seventy-five units at six an acre, you'd still have like four and a half acres left over of the property, which still would probably be then developed as some sort of housing, whether it's half-acre housing or, so you're going to end up with more than the seventy-five units anyway.
Not sure if that's really feasible. I mean...
Yeah, I'm not suggesting you do that.
That's infeasible.
I'm just saying you wouldn't, at six units an acre, if the number came down, the acreage would come down potentially too, leaving for other potential uses.
Ownership does have a, it's just the way it's laid out, the way it's situated. We didn't really look at, we haven't specifically looked at the feasibility of that. I mean, the, our, you know, the direction from ownership was...
There's no suggestion that you do that here.
That becomes complicated in terms of you can't just say, then you have, you know, what effect, what amounts to a small sewer extension
Right.
that's longer into single-family residences and
Right.
it really starts mucking with the economics and the economies of scale of the project.
So your request is for us to consider it at one oh four?
Yes.
At six units per acre?
Yes.
Even though the code itself won't allow this pro, even if we give you that category, you still couldn't do all of it?
If it's structured correctly, as Janice said...
With the nonprofit ownership.
We should wait for the report. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to wait for this report before...
Anyway, I mean, we are, you know, we'll, we're flexible to...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that should, that's not an imperative. If, there's, there's a structural way to get there, this, at the one oh four. It's just, again, we need a willing part, so.
And that's what's in front of us now.
Yeah, and on the unit piece, I mean, again, that, the sort of like, the balancing act and I, I guess just to speak, I mean, for me, like in other instances, I've found like people like to, you know, when we can lean back on something that's existing and where it doesn't seem like we're getting special treatment, and that was also driving the one oh four of trying to be grounded in precedent and grounded in an existing code and, and that six per acre, and that's where we really also drove it.
Maybe in there one twenty or something, or that's not...
That's part of the issue here too, is, you know, we spoke with you guys about reaching out to the mobile home park there because that's a lot of contribution to a watershed that's directly under there. And that was brought up and apparently didn't have any, any success in, in working with them or their willingness to work with you to try to reduce that.
Yeah, they're not interested in, on a voluntary basis.
Yeah.
Right, but it's possible the town might have a role to play through our water quality funds if there was a sewage treatment plant literally next to it and it required, you know, creating the infrastructure to get the sewage from, I don't know how many units are at that mobile home facility, but to get it...
Approximately fifty?
Fifty, over fifty.
If your plant were scaled appropriately to handle that additional effluent, there might be a role to play for the town because that would be a significant opportunity to reduce nitrogen.
That'd be good, so it'd be like protect your water quality money.
The mobile homes would have to, the ownership would have to be compelled. That's been our, what we've found. We're, we're willing.
Well, that's what I'd understood, so I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, they would need to be compelled.
There's fifty units and it's zoned R twenty.
Right, that, well, it might be an incentive if they were, didn't have to pay for that connection to the sewage treatment.
I don't see the mobile home folks contributing in a capital. Because there's no, what would be the incentive?
I understand that, though the incentive could be a cleaner environment.
No, no, no.
The town, the town might have, if there were no financial obligation there, it was, you know, but then it would be important that your sewage treatment facility were either scalable or built at a size large enough to accommodate additional, that additional effluent. If, let's say, the town hypothetically were to step in and say, we'd like to connect the mobile home facility next door, we're going to provide a grant to do that and boom.
So one of the great, I think, parts of this plan is we're preserving, you know, forty, forty percent plus or minus of the, of the site is just untouched. So there's a lot of room to do that, to be flexible, and also just in thinking about, you know, would we break up the site in seventy-five and then single-family homes? I think you would lose a lot of that preservation opportunity, which, which exists with this plan. So again, you know, I think we, we've hoped to convey is that, you know, we want to march down the road and if there's sort of a, a road that the town would like us to follow, we, we'd like to try to make that work.
Yeah, I just, I, this sewage treatment thing creates to me an interesting possibility.
Absolutely.
And I think it's worth considering because there's not going to be a lot of opportunities to get that mobile home facility potentially hooked up to sewage treatment. This is a potential opportunity if everybody's willing and...
There's probably not space on site of the mobile home to do it.
To do it, right. No, they would have to tie into your facility.
We are willing.
Okay, you're willing.
Yeah, the problem, the problem was that, that they were not willing, willing or not, there wasn't a whole lot of sense of cooperation there.
At least at the moment.
At the moment.
Yeah, it's a popular consideration, I'm sure.
Later on, you know, if suddenly they're required to put in IA systems for a hundred and fifty, or what is it, how many, fifty units?
Fifty plus.
They might suddenly become willing because of some, you know, future mandate for nitrogen reduction. There's suddenly will to be an opportunity as long as you have a cooperative neighbor in the affordable housing development.
I think it would have to be explained to them because it's, that's a lot of retrofitting. That's putting a sewer pipe in the, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not, I think it's a fantastic idea. It's just, it has to, it's going to have to be marketed and affected to them the right way.
Right. I just want to make sure if we're going to approve this, that there's the ability to scale the capacity of the plant to accommodate additional flow beyond, you know, the hundred and four units that are proposed.
Well, we'd of course have to have a commitment because that's a different plant to build and we'd have to have...
Or not necessarily. It could be just an area reserved for future expansion.
I don't know enough about package
I can address that.
Package design.
Mike Russo from Nelson Pope and Voorhees. The Suffolk County Department of Health Services requires that there's a hundred percent expansion area for every system like this. So automatically, there's going to be a, a space for expansion of the building itself as well as the leaching area. So that's an automatic requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't the, it wasn't the capacity requirement that was more of, of concern. It was the cost of actually
Yeah.
getting those homes hooked up.
I understand that. I just want to make it clear that that's going to be built into the plan, no matter what.
Yeah.
To get, to get approval, they'll have to do that.
And that's based on what you're proposing, not an additional, additional homes?
Right. Automatically, anyone who has a system like this has to have the property available to double that.
It's the cost of hooking up to that, which is...
For that same reason. So there's possibly
Water quality.
in the future.
Water quality could do that.
We could possibly...
So if that space is hooked up and used in the future, are they then required to double it as well?
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm, I'm taking the mask. And if they have the hundred percent expansion area, if that use does get used, are they then required to expand it yet again?
No, I don't believe so.
By Suffolk County? It's just, okay.
But it wouldn't be a...
I'm not absolutely certain about that.
Fifty units, if you're, if the plant is for a hundred units and it's doubled, then if the plant is for two hundred units and you're adding fifty...
It's the plant that's serving.
Well, I, I don't think it goes by necessarily by the number of units. It's the volume, it's the volume of the flow
It's the flow.
coming into it.
Yeah. So it, it wouldn't be a major increase, I don't think.
Do you have an idea of what kind of plant or what kind of system you're proposing?
I don't know. That would be up to them. At this point, it's very conceptual.
Right, right.
But there are a number of innovative systems that Suffolk County has approved.
Is this, would this be considered a cluster system? Is that, or is it sewage treatment?
No.
It's an appendix A system.
Excuse me?
It would be an appendix A system
Okay.
sewage treatment under appendix A of the Suffolk County sanitary code.
And if that happened in the future, where this were connected, assuming, you know, presuming there's some town funds that connected and you're willing to connect it, there could be some then revenue to help you deal with the cost of processing additional effluent. You know, in other words, it wouldn't be free to the mobile home. They would pay some O and M to the affordable housing complex next door that's processing their waste. So...
Yeah, I just think we would look for it not to be a cost to us, as, as long as that's...
Yeah, no, at least it would cover your costs. It wouldn't be a cost to you.
Not, we're not looking for it to be a profit center.
That's a hard one to sell.
Right. Well, no, because they're paying now to get sanitary systems pumped and things like that. They would no longer have to worry about those kinds of things. So it probably would be a break even for them as well. But you don't want it to be a cost burden for the mobile home, for the affordable housing development either, so.
Well, the overarching issue is that chances are that some locations may just have cesspools without septic tanks or, you know, we, we don't know this, but...
Well, given that density, I think you're probably, probably right to...
Probably agree.
Right.
All right. Any, any other questions?
Well, too many, but...
But Janice, you can explore that possibility when you do your report too, right? The scalability of the sewage treatment or the, that it could be potential, potentially something that could benefit.
Sure, as a general concept, but I think if you really want to
You can't condition...
explore it, you could do that in the secret analysis, whatever that looks like. You can ask for that as an understanding.
It'd be an interesting opportunity, so.
Those are what, sixteen?
Yeah, no, it was just...
We were going to bring our sewer engineer, but we got, we're maxed at ten.
I don't know how big a, a mobile home is.
Well, it potentially makes the whole project net neutral
Yeah, they're less than twelve hundred.
For nitrogen.
Trying to figure, we know that's six fifty.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Two twenty-five. I forget what the, what the volume would be. Twenty twenty-five a day for a regular...
Huh? Two twenty-five gallons per day, he's saying.
Two twenty-five. Because they're more than six hundred or less than twelve fifty. That's, that's a decent baseline. Times fifty is the volume.
Well, putting IA systems, is that what you're...
To handle the flow from the sewage treatment from the mobile home.
I don't think it's a lot, actually.
Flow is based upon the size of the unit. It's, I think it's up to six hundred, it's like two hundred a day, between six hundred and twelve fifty. It's six, two fifty. And then strangely enough, once you get to twelve fifty, even if your house is twenty thousand square feet, it's three hundred gallons a day. But this, that's the way they calculate the waste load.
They're, they're looking at creating a new category for even smaller units of a, a lower flow number. Because right now, the bottom number
Is six hundred?
Is six hundred.
Yeah, is, is that's the size? I think, is it two hundred?
That's the capacity, but...
It's two twenty-five and that's what you're talking about, is micro, those micro apartment category, which would be a hundred and fifty gallons a day.
Which could be like the calculation for the mobile home facility might fall into that category where...
It's likely to be two twenty-five or either one fifty or two twenty-five, but I'll, I'll...
I don't think they've changed it yet.
It's, yeah, it's in flux, so I, we don't really know what...
Well, we'll just give you a ballpark, so you know, in the report.
Yeah.
These are all the fun studies you get to do if you invite us to apply. We get to do.
I think we're done now.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, just, I appreciate you all coming and what you've done on this particular application and the outreach, early outreach and preliminary outreach to the community so far.
All right, so we'll await the recommendation of our planning department and we appreciate you guys coming here today. Get back safely and we're going to move on to the next topic, so thank you.
Thanks for your...
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
All right. Should we grab?
Thank you.
Bob, good to see you. All right, here comes the clerk.
Here comes the clerk. Where did I hear that from? Here comes the clerk.
Here comes the judge.
Here comes the judge.
Laughing?
Was that laughing?
Maybe.
A long time ago.
So am I age.
I don't know who's been here since I left, so you're going to have to...
No worries.
Yes.
Janice was there.
Or was it he hung?
No.
That was laughing.
Was it laughing?
All right, so we're going to review the draft agenda for the meeting of November tenth, which is next Tuesday, and this meeting will occur in the afternoon, one o'clock, right here, Town Hall on Hampton Road in Southampton. And we have a bunch of public hearings, thirteen of them, lucky, lucky thirteen. So we've got, let's see, first one is on the budget, preliminary budget for 2021. Second one to consider increases proposed in the maximum, in the maximum amounts to be expended annually in the town of Southampton's special districts. Third one is on the acquisition of interest in lands of the Conic Land Trust. This is out in Eastport. They're contract vendees. This is a farmland property, Mansa CPF Management and Sewership Plan conclude that property. Fourth is accepting a deed of residual fee. It's a public hearing. This is from Blair K. Gaza. Property to be maintained is open space located in East Quogue pursuant to Southampton Town Code two forty-four dash four, which is the section pertaining to obtaining a development rights certificate and two forty-seven, General Municipal Law, State of New York. The fifth hearing similarly accepts a deed of residual fee from Blair K. Gaza. This is a property in West Hampton. The sixth one, again, is a, accepts a hearing on accepting the deed of residual fee. This time it's from Rosemary Growl.[1602.01] This time it's from Rosemary Grau. And this would be also maintained as open spaces. This is in West Hampton. And seventh one related, it's accepts a quit, quit claim deed from Rosemary Grau for properties maintained as open space located in West Hampton. The eighth is a public hearing accepting a deed of residual fee from Joseph Gaza. This is for property in North Sea. And the ninth one is a grant of a conservation easement, accept the TDR grant, accept the TDR grant of conservation easement from Blair K. Gaza. This property is located in West Hampton. And the 10th public hearing is considering the acceptance of a grant of conservation easement in connection with the application of Southampton Country Day Camp in North Sea. And the 11th hearing is consider a grant of conservation easement in connection with the subdivision map of Mohawk Halsey LLC out in Watermill. The 12th is a public hearing to consider projects proposed for 2020 Community Preservation Fund, 20% water quality improvement funding. And the last is a public hearing for the proposed recipients of 2021 Community Development Block Grants. All right. Any questions on public hearings? All right, so.
Well, actually, just, just one point. Public hearing 12 on the proposed water quality improvement funding will be, I think, over 11 projects.
So be ready for a long one?
A long one, I know.
Okay. So then we'll go to resolutions. John, you're offering the first one?
Town Board Resolution ID 35044, authorized purchase and installation of dog park fence at Pine Nick Marina from Suffolk County Contract Residential Fences Corp.
I'd like to be a co-sponsor on that, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
I think so.
That's not the same dog park, though, in East.
No, this is at Pine Nick.
This is a different one. All right. 35077?
I'm sorry, is that what you were?
This is the East Quogue off leash area that we had the.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay. And you're gonna co-sponsor it? Yeah, I know you've been very involved with.
Yeah, I think you should be lead sponsor. I don't know why.
That's fine. I don't mind.
That's at Pine Nick Marina? Yeah, it's the same place?
Yeah, it's the same place. It's a little area off the Marina on the other side.
All right, so can we just change the sponsors? Why not?
Yeah, I'm adding this one.
Do you wanna make her lead?
No, that's fine.
All right, wait, whatever, let's.
Let's work for somebody.
You've been, this has been your project?
Yeah, this has been your project.
Put Julia's, put Julia's lead and John as co.
Sorry, John.
Co-John.
We'll get it done.
You're good on that? All right. 35077, authorized purchase of general building maintenance involving new construction, reconstruction and demolition from Renew Contracting and Restoration Inc. using the Bay Shore UFSD contract. I'm not quite sure what's that one as pertains to. Now we can try to get more detail. All right. 35086, authorized purchases, purchases of industrial and commercial supplies and equipment from New York State OGS contract with WW Granger Inc. and Fascinal Company. Next one, 35120, authorized supervisor to execute a contract with Aquarius Capital Company to provide actuarial services for the town. 35131, authorized supervisor to sign 2021 contract extension, Green Velvet Tree Inc. for tree and stump removal east and west of Shinnecott Canal. 35113, authorizes the supervisor to sign an agreement with Suffolk County for the implementation of the school bus stop, stop arm camera program. Let me explain what that is, because I don't think we've talked about it. As a board, Suffolk County has gotten state authority to do automated ticketing when people pass a stop school bus. And because we adjudicate our own tickets, which is different than Western Suffolk, we have to sort of have a separate opt-in. The schools themselves have their own opt-in. I think they're all opting into this program. There are some work to be done in this in terms of reviewing some of those tickets, but we can take whatever expenses that we incur and the county will reimburse us fully for whatever expenses we have.
That's in the MOA.
That's in there, yep. The county's agreed to do that. So if, we can figure out the amount of time in reviewing those tickets, and we'll be fully reimbursed for those, as well as we're going to get 10% off the top as well of the, any revenue that comes in from the tickets in our jurisdiction. So.
Where would people have to go to pay these tickets?
So it's all automated unless they're adjudicated. So let's say you drive past a stop school bus, there is equipment on the side of the bus that will read your license plate.
Right.
Just like a red light camera type of ticket, it will, the owner of the car, whoever that car is registered, will receive the, the ticket. First, it gets reviewed by us if we believe it's a legitimate. We look at the video, yes, somebody violated the law. It then will, the company, the vendor that the county has selected, will then send you the, the ticket. I think it's like a $250 ticket. If you, 99% of the time, apparently, well over 90% of the time, the people just pay the tickets. They see the video, they said, whoops, I, I made a mistake, they pay the ticket. The ones that fight it will then come to Justice Court.
Yeah, that's my question. And people shouldn't be doing this, no doubt. But they would go to Southampton Town Justice Court.
Right, and those expenses.
Our judges.
Yeah. And, and, and that will then be determined as an expense that we'd be reimbursed for. That will be part of that. A little, not the easiest thing to calculate, but.
It's our police department that's.
But I think quarterly, we will submit, no, the police department won't be involved. You know, possibly in the reviewing of, you know, if there's some questionable violation. And it is, it is, there is a grace period. I think it's a 30-day grace period when this program kicks in, where instead of getting the ticket, you'll just get the warning that, you know, after the grace period, you know, it'll be a ticket. You know, so somebody who, you know, may have inadvertently driven by a stop school bus will be made more fully aware of that. But after that grace period, then it's, it's automatic, it's automatic ticketing. Now, people need to be aware that, they should know this, on a, a two-lane highway or, you know, in opposite directions, if a school bus is stopped on the other side of the road, you still have to stop. That gets a little confusing when you have a four-lane road like County Road 39.
Well, actually five lane, because there's a turn lane, so.
And it can be even more confusing if there's a tree median, you know, or a grass median or something. You still have to stop, so.
In a Floyd Parkway, if you hold on. Buses on the southern, and you're going north, you have to, with the.
You have to stop.
Really?
It's the law.
What about the train tracks?
That.
Of that, yeah.
In between the two lanes? Down the middle of.
They stop at train tracks? School buses?
Yeah.
Does that mean you have to stop on?
No, 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 it's only when the, the little arm comes out.
No, the lights are blinking.
When the lights are blinking, the arm that says stop. Yeah, you, when it says stop, you have to stop.
The train is stopped, they open the door, they.
You don't, no, if a school bus stops for a train, no, no, it's, you don't have to stop for that. That's to protect the kids who are inside that bus. The reason why you stop your car at a bus stop when the school bus stops, because the kids are.
Getting out of the car.
Kids are getting in and out, that's right. So, anyway.
So this is, this would be within the town's jurisdiction, and we get 10% of the revenue. Is, is that correct?
10% off the top and all of our expenses reimbursed.
Which, which would be nominal. I'm, I'm, my question is about jurisdiction. Are we ceding jurisdiction somehow to the county of Suffolk in the town of Southampton?
So, in, in a way, yes, we potentially could have our own program, but, you know, we would have to then find a vendor to install all the equipment. And, you know, the vendor gets, I think, 40% or 45% off the top, the vendor that does all the, all the work. So in Western Suffolk, the towns don't get anything because it all goes to Suffolk County PD, right? Because they have their own traffic violations bureau.
Right, and it goes through the Suffolk County Traffic.
I wasn't, to be honest with you, I wasn't thrilled with how the state law came out where we only get 10%. I had to then go back and negotiate that we would get our, the 10% off the top, not the, not, not the net, 10% off the gross ticket, and we would get fully reimbursed for whatever expenses. So the county agreed to, agreed to, the state law doesn't require that, but the county is willing to reimburse us from this program for whatever costs we incur.
Is that only buses in our jurisdiction? What about buses that come from sporting events from other jurisdictions outside of?
I don't know if those are school buses, but this is only applies to school buses?
Delivering children from school, not other transport.
So, all right, I see what you're saying. So like, if Sachum brings a school bus out to a game here, lets the kids out, somebody passes it, it's equipped with that. Somebody passes that school bus, they're automatically ticketed. I, I don't know.
Where everybody's fresh and occurred, if it occurred.
It would still go to us.
Yeah, it should, right.
It should, because of where the registration is.
Now, the apparatus, whatever, the count, the camera, the, the thing that, that records the, the transgression, that's gonna be on the school bus.
Right.
And many of the school buses are owned by the school districts. Do they get any piece of this money?
They don't, but there was another agreement that was negotiated with the county that all of the revenue would go to basically pedestrian school safety measures countywide.
That's good.
So, so even the money collected in Western Suffolk potentially could be spent in Eastern Suffolk, you know, because Public Works Department, you know, does sidewalks and things like that, that they wouldn't put it into a school district, a separate tax district or something like that. So couldn't pay for a crossing guard that might normally be paid with, by a school district. It could, it could be used, though, to build a sidewalk or something like that. Does that answer your question?
There are many questions that I have with this. You know, I mean, we're, we're dealing with a school district, which is its own municipality, where we're putting something on their equipment and then charging transgressions through the county of Suffolk, who gets most of the money, and then we get 10%, and it's our roads. And I'm just wondering, you know, are we ceding jurisdiction to the county of Suffolk? I think, I think the answer is yes.
Well, yeah, we could do the program.
That concerns me. I like the program, and people shouldn't be doing this. Absolutely not. And I think 250 is a little low for people who do that, but that's a difference.
Yeah, I, I think that we should have gotten a bigger cut. But, you know, with the agreement that all the money gets spent, all the revenue goes county, that the county collects goes countywide, which is good, and we get an additional 10% off the top for anything that happens in the town of Southampton. And the county is going to spend anything they get countywide, so I think, and we get reimbursed, sorry, we get reimbursed for our expenses. So I think there's some good things in it that.
How was the deed uploaded? Held on the, on the bus on the camera and downloaded manually? Is that, I mean, how is?
It's all electronic.
It is, so, so I'm, okay. I'm just confused, because I know when we're trying to put police, you know, dash cams or other things, because there's evidence that it has to be handled in a certain way, so that, you know.
I wonder if I couldn't get somebody from the county to come to the town board meeting. I know they certainly could answer any questions. Steve Rendazzo from the County Executive's Office has been the one who's been explaining this program.
So if somebody fights it and it comes to Southampton Town Court, who's the prosecutor? All right, someone from the county comes out and says, this person passed a school bus and.
I don't know the answer to that.
The ADA? That would go to the ADA's office?
It's a traffic violation, it's a moving violation, it's private area.
Okay.
But it, it still has to be protected under the safe rules and regulations protecting evidence, correct? So, I mean, so that cameras, data can't get tampered with and all the issues. It's one of the big blocks we have for, you know, having camp, police cams on officers and dash cams and things that cost.
Let me, uh, let's, let's move on, let's get through the agenda. Let me see if I can get Steve Rendazzo on the phone.
Okay. And one, one question you can ask him upfront is, is this the agreement that was negotiated with East Hampton South Old Shelter Island or?
Yeah, no, it's exactly the same.
Okay.
That, that I know.
It is the same.
Yeah, and, and he did present to the East End Supervisors and Mayor's Association. And I think all the school districts have opted into the program, because they have to opt in. So even though they don't get revenue from it, they do get benefit in terms of, it discourages people, obviously, from driving past school buses, so it keeps the kids safer, and any revenue does go toward school safety, which is good. It's positive.
So that's good. That's gonna go into a special fund in the county to build sidewalks and crosswalks and good things for children going to and from school.
Exactly. All right, so let, let's keep going, and then I'll, I'll make an attempt to see if we can get Steve Rendazzo on speakerphone, and we can ask any questions. All right, John, you're, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID 35127, to authorize a supervisor to sign contract extension for Sag Harbor Transfer Station booth replacement.
35093, authorized supervisor to sign contract extension for dry cleaning and laundry services for police department for east of the canal with Southampton Village Cleaners and Watermill Village Cleaners. 35094, authorized supervisor to sign contract extension for dry cleaning and laundry services for police department for the west of the canal, for west of the canal, sorry, with Good Ground Cleaners Inc. and Quality Care Cleaners. 35100, authorized supervisor to sign contract extension for hardware and various items for pickup. 35123, authorizes the renewal of agreement with Baseline Health Management LLC to provide comprehensive health physicals. 35124, authorizes supervisor to sign 2021 agreement with Penflex Inc. for the defined benefit service award program. 35136, authorized supervisor to execute a 2021 maintenance agreement with Tracker Software Corporation, formerly known as Business Management Service Systems Inc. for PubWorks software for various town facilities. 35125, authorized supervisor to execute a 2021 retainer agreement with Peter Johnson Esquire to provide tax sorcery services.
Town Board Resolution ID 35134, authorize the supervisor to execute a new agreement with L.K. McLean Associates PC for on-call engineering services to be provided to the town department for various town-wide projects.
35130, authorizes the supervisor to execute a traffic signal agreement with the county of Suffolk for the traffic signals at CR 38, North Sea Road and Parish Road in Southampton.
Resolution ID 35132, authorize the supervisor to sign an extension for Suffolk Paving Corp. for furnish and install asphalt concrete.
Resolution ID 35137, authorize the supervisor to sign extension with Jackson Dodds &amp; Company Inc. to provide maintenance on trails in Southampton.
Resolution 35122, recall and amend Town Board Resolution 138 of 2020 for L.K. McLean Associates PC for professional services to be provided for the Allwife, Allwives Creek Habitat Enhancement.
Town Board Resolution 35126, rescind Town Board Resolution 2018, 1180.
35095, resolution rescinding Town Board Resolution 2020 through 327 and 328 for the purchase of two 2020 F-250s and authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Ford F-250 XLs. All right, 35135, award and authorize supervisor to sign contract with Fisher Signs and Shirts LLC for vehicle graphics. 35128 is 2020 notice, the bidders for supply number two, fuel, oil, service and repair. 35.
Supervisor, I need to make an amendment on the date of the bids will be opened in the first take notice, under notice bidders, from November 25th, 2020 to December 2nd.
All right, so you wanna make that change?
Yes. That's been coordinated with the contracts department.
To December, what, 20th?
Second.
Second, second. Also at 2:00 PM?
Yes. Everything else is the same, just that one particular date.
All right, since it will be received on November 25th, but from November 25th to December 2nd?
Yes, so they'll be received, it means the bids need to be here in the building by December 2nd at 2:00.
Okay. All right.
So you have two dates on there. Is that, I just wanna clarify.
The date it becomes available online.
So there's a, I just wanna clear, there's a range of dates that the bids can be received.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
The window.
No, in, in here, though. So is this gonna say Wednesday, November 25th through December 2nd, or is this gonna say December 2nd?
It's changing, November 25th.
Thank you. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just making the deadline a week out because.
Got it.
All right, the resolution 35101, amends the 2020 adopted budget for Bridgeton Park District.
Sunday, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to that. Thank you.
Did, did you take a look at it?
I did.
You good with it?
This, and, and this particular expenditure is for really finishing up the project, getting a final survey on it, doing plantings. I think Kristen, Ms. Dulles emailed everyone on this. Also signage and a fence that's gonna be erected between the commercial properties and the park.
What'd you think of the brickwork?
I, I, when I saw it, I liked it.
Okay.
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
It wasn't what I was expecting?
Right.
In terms of the pattern of the bricks?
Right.
But.
That's what I thought.
All right, 35085, amends the 2020 budget for various departments. 35129, accepts donation from Fisher Signs and Shirts.
35104, acknowledged November 2020 as the Southampton Youth Board's Volunteer Recognition Month, and I'll be talking about that later on at our update session.
35061, accepts retirement of Michael Zara, Southampton Town Police Lieutenant, January 4th, 2021. 34. 34952 is deputy tax receiver. This would be, I guess there is a, oh, there was a retirement.
Retirement.
And there's an open position that the tax receiver is looking to fill. Okay, named individual there. 35117 is reallocates construction equipment operator title to new grade. 35042 is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of the estate of Vivian Culver in West Hampton. And amend CPF management stewardship plan to include the property. 35028, oh, that's you, John?
ID 35028, a notice of public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 205 Waste Management to amend and add definitions, amend regulations, address waste management on commercial properties, and require a permit or single-entry pass for residential self-haulers at Southampton Town Transfer Station.
Yeah, that's long, so...
Thank you.
So that, that is tied to the budget, too?
Yes.
So that's the idea that you'll need a permit to use the transfer stations, right?
For recycling for self-haulers.
Right. Not just for recycling, it just...
Well, for, yeah, for...
For use, right?
For use. I always recycle, so, just want to get that point out. Town Board Resolution ID 35027, notice of public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 330 zoning. Section 183 site plan elements to I address rainstorm retention and I, I have to require recycling containers on, on site plans within the town.
Could you modify, I had some concerns about interior. These are, this is for at the grounds, right?
Yeah, it's a place to put the, a pad, essentially. It's important because there's, it just gets really messy.
Okay.
And there's, there's two options to do that.
It's like, okay, it's like right now, they normally show where the dumpster is going to go, it'll be...
There'll be a place where it has to go.
Okay. 34758, authorize acquisition of lands of Hampton Valley Associates, East Quad, and amends the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID 34826, accept conservation easement in connection with application of Southampton Country Day Camp North Sea. Town Board Resolution ID 34893 to accept conservation easement in connection with subdivision map of Mohawk Paulsy, LLC and Watermill.
There's a few more that weren't in that packet, but they're in the secondary packet. 34914 appoints Jeffrey Vergenti, new court officer position in Southampton Town Police Department. 35063 is a notice of public hearing to consider amending various sections of the Town Code in connection with the regulation of battery energy storage systems within the town. We had a work session on that. 35121 is a 2020 notice to bidders, Town Hall Accessibility, that's a new elevator.
And 35138, this is a notice of public hearing to consider enacting Article 10.1 of Southampton Town Code, Chapter 330 zoning, to authorize agricultural conservation districts with the town formerly known as Agricultural Plan Development Districts.
Right, so the thing that got wiped out, when we wiped out PDDs related to Ag PDDs, would sort of be brought back in a slightly different form.
Right, it's going to be put into a different location in 330.
All right, any questions on any of that, on the agenda? All right, so, Sunday, you're free to go ahead and make those changes that we discussed and publish it. All right, let's, let's do some updates, and then I'll try to see if I can reach someone from the county on the school bus camera program. Try to get Ryan in.
I don't need anyone from the county, I really don't.
You don't? Okay.
Just maybe if we could see the memo of understanding, so we know what to tell constituents or some kind of abstract of the law.
Okay, I mean, I could see if they're available, but, but that's fine. If, you can call them separately, too.
Yeah.
With any questions, I'll give you, I'll give you the phone number. All right, and Ryan, we should try to get Ryan in on COVID updates. I don't have much to report. You guys were at Nathaniel Rogers' house when they put the cupola up, so that's, that must have been exciting.
How was it?
It was great. You know, large crane, the cupola was, was constructed off-site, brought to the site, and was on the ground. 6,000 pounds that cupola is, and it was, it was hoisted up onto the building, and, and you could see it there today. It's gonna, it's gonna be there for a long time. Well-made, I loved it, you know, it had, you know, all the copper, the original design work.
Great.
It's, it's really quite beautiful, and, and it looks nice on the structure.
I can't, I can't wait to see it. I'll have to take a ride out. And other than that, I mean, this week was mostly elections, Election Day, and we're still waiting to count all the votes, and then we'll, we'll know who the winners and losers are. We'll be able to congratulate the local winners when we have a certified vote. Other than that, I don't really have, you know, I'd like to do a little bit on the COVID piece, but not without Ryan, so maybe we'll do that next Thursday. Anybody else have any updates? Julie?
All right, so earlier in our draft agenda, we had a resolution about Volunteer Recognition Month. So November is the Southampton Youth Board's Volunteer Recognition Month, and at each work session in November, I'll be announcing the names of all the nominated volunteers, so I wanted to say thanks to our youth board members who work really hard throughout the whole year to get, to make Southampton Town a better place for our kids. And I also wanted to just say a general thank you to all volunteers out there. No matter what you do, thank you, I think the world revolves around volunteers. So, these are the first six nominees for our virtual Volunteer Recognition Month. The first is Alan Rodriguez of Hampton Bays, who is nominated by St. Rosalie's Church. Kenyatta Nash, she's 16 years old from Riverside, nominated by The Butterfly Effect Project. Imani Thomas of Flanders, nominated by The Riverhead Cap. Reese Nugent, Southampton High School, nominated by The Retreat. Linda Frankenbach, nominated by Itry. And last, but certainly not least, is seven-year-old Destiny Tuck from Flanders, who is nominated by The Butterfly Effect. And I'd say, let's all try to be like Destiny, who at seven is volunteering her time. So that's our first group for this week. Please go to the Southampton Town website to read the full bios, there's a lot of information on each of these people. They do a lot of great things, so please go read their personal bios, and congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other reports?
Just quickly, the Sonic Estuary Program up on site is a link to their CMP, which is their document that they operate from and do all their good work, and there's a really good description on the programs that PDP does, so it's, it's come out, it's turned out to be a really good document. COVID has kind of prevented us from going out with a bigger, bigger kind of presentation at the moment, but, so all the links are on the town website.
I think we still have the police survey up, is that correct, Connie? So this is a, you can weigh in on town policing practices on the town's website, too. We're collecting that data. I think that, that's really it.
I actually did have one more thing. We're getting a number of emails from people from Cornell Cooperative Extension on one of the projects that's coming up in front of us. It's kind of interesting. Some of them, I wanted them to be able to get into the record, but if you have, you've got any additional ones, I'm just trying to get those to the clerks, so they all stay in the record. Really, and it's a really positive, very positive comments. I got one from a nine-year-old.
I think I saw that one.
Yeah, it was cute, it was really good.
All right, anything else?
I'm done, thank you.
All right, there are some executive session items. Land acquisition for CPF, litigation, and typically personnel matters we'll cover, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items.
Second.
Executed by Councilman Bavie, all in favor?
All right.
All right, we're adjourned for all other purposes.